4th, 2022. It is a few minutes after seven, looks like 7:05. Thank you for your cooperation. We had some technology that we had to get taken care of before the meeting started. We are Facebook Live and Access Vision Live. At this period of time, I'd like to have the Commission stand, if you're able to, for a silent period of time for our invocation. And then I'd like to call upon the Vice Mayor to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you can. Vice Mayor?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I've been informed that there are going to be a few Commissioners having to do a voice vote. I just want to make sure the Clerk knows that. At this period of time, I'd like to call upon the Clerk to do the roll call.
Commissioner Blood?
Present.
Vice Mayor Ferris?
Present.
Commissioner Herring?
Present.
Commissioner Lance?
Here.
Mayor Banky?
Here.
Commissioner Morris?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Present.
Commissioner Sophia?
Here.
And Commissioner Zenda Wilson?
Present.
Thank you.
I once again would like to thank the entire Commission for being here at the meeting today. I've also been informed by our City Managers the live stream is not working, but they are working on it. At this period of time, I'd like to note any added or deleted resolutions, Madam Clerk?
There were none.
Thank you very much. Are there any petitions, communications, or reports?
There were none.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is the adoption of ordinances. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
Section 02 of Chapter 212 of Battle Creek City Ordinances, Rules of Procedure of the Commission, sets out the rules for nearly all aspects of City Commission meetings, notices, agendas, ordinances, and resolutions. However, it does not set out the numbering procedure of ordinances and resolutions that is customary even followed in agenda preparation. The charter change providing for the election of the Mayor with a two-year term and a two-year term for the Vice Mayor was selected by the new Commissioners at the organizational meeting resulted in the organizational meeting only occurring bi- annually. This resolution adopts ordinance number 12-2021 to amend Section 2, parentheses XXI of Chapter 212, Rules of Procedure of the Commission, to clarify and formalize the numbering system of ordinances and resolutions placed on the City Commission agenda.
I move for the adoption of ordinance 12-2021.
Support.
So moved and supported to adopt Resolution 276, Ordinance Number 12-2021. Are there any public comments at this time? Are there any public comments? See none? Do we have any Commission comments at this time? See none? Please vote.
Commissioner Ferris?
Yes.
Commissioner Lance?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Mayor?
The adoption of ordinance 276, Resolution Ordinance 12-2021, has been approved. Next item on our agenda is public comment regarding consent agenda and resolutions not on the consent agenda. This is limited to three minutes. Are there any public comments regarding consent agenda and resolutions not on the consent agenda? John Keneffek, please.
Hello, citizens of Battle Creek. I'll be talking about Resolution 285 and 286. Now, they're not identical, but they're very close. The difference between 285 has to do with the Police Department and supplying electricity to it during high peak times. Resolution 286 has to do with the Verona Wells and the sewage treatment plant on River Road. Now, this agreement here in 285 and 286 is pretty much close to being comparable. And what it basically says is in doing peak times during when electricity demand is high, the consumer power would like to go forward and tell the government at the Police Department or Waste Treatment Verona Wells to switch over to their generators so they can take that electricity and not supply them to those facilities and transfer them somewhere else where they can make more money. This works to the advantage both of 285 and 286, Resolution 285 and 286, because there's approximately $18,000 kind of a teaser fee that the government gets every year for this program. And while the electricity is used by their generators either at the Police Department or at the Waste Treatment Verona areas, the consumer power will reimburse either in materials as far as fuel oil or perhaps give them a char- or no charge on some of the electricity they're paying back. This works very well for both consumer power to make extra profit. And I'd like to read you at the bottom of the resolution, it's identical, 286 and 285. It says these words. "This saves consumer energy in costs from investing large amounts of capital into facilities and equipment to manage a few hours of energy demand and provides a worthwhile financial incentive to the city to participate while ensuring the city will become adequate means to provide the essential services to the city residences and business." In other words, when this happens, basically, the consumer power and when they switch over from the City of Battle Creek will make profit. Now, where does the money come from that consumer power is paying the City of Battle Creek? Well, it comes from the citizens, people that use that, their customers. Where does the City of Battle Creek purchase or pay for the electricity normally at Verona Wells Waste Treatment Plant in the Police Department? That comes from the taxpayers, it's in their water sewer, water readiness bills. So you're being taxed from two different locations and consumer power gives an incentive back to the City of Battle Creek, the government of Battle Creek, to the tune of about $18,000 per year. I'm not saying this is a bad thing, I'm just simply saying that it would be nice to have profit go to the citizens and not the government. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other public comments at this time? See none. Our next item on our agenda is Commission comment regarding meeting business. Commissioner Blood?
Yes, thank you. I want to comment on Resolution 284, which is the always stop control at 28th and Hupp. I just wanted to recognize and lift up our City Engineers, DPW staff, for working with the Lakeview School District. I spoke with their Transportation Director, and she's very pleased with the stop. It's helping with traffic flow, it's a positive for that community environment. So everyone is very excited about that stop, and I just want to thank the city for working with them and helping make that space safer for traffic. And I, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mm-hmm.
Are there any other Commission comments about items on our agenda? If not, Ellen or Tina?
I move for the approval of our consent agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported to approve the consent agenda. Are there comments or questions by the Commission? See none? Would you please vote on the consent agenda?
Vice Mayor Ferris?
Yes.
Commissioner Herring?
Yes.
Commissioner Lance?
Yes.
And Commissioner Zenda Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Their voting party is not working. It prompts them and they vote, but it continues to lose.
Oh?
Okay.
I don't know. We'll probably just always vote for the
Okay.
Okay, the consent agenda has been approved. I did notice our State Representative walked into the room. I want to thank him for being here. And if you would like to have a couple minutes, feel free to come at this period of time. Sorry to put you on the spot, but I didn't know if you were going to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Well, Mayor Banky, that's part of the job, is to be put on the spot. So, thanks for putting me on the spot. I didn't have anything prepared to say, but I will tell you that, as you all know, the redistricting commission a week ago described what House seats and State Senate seats we would have and what congressional districts we're have going forward, depending upon pending lawsuits which might yet follow. But I don't think they're going to affect us in South Central Michigan very significantly. I am pleased that the 62nd District, which will become the 44th, will be much like it is now with the exception that Albion Township drops off. And I don't think that the State Senate District deviates too very greatly from what exists presently as well. Obviously, no, our congressional district is going westward instead of northwestward. And if that all continues, we'll be, at least from a congressional district, more locked up with Kalamazoo than we've been in 30 years or so. So I'm pleased that we have some finality. As Vice Mayor Sophia knows, that's something that hangs over legislators like a cloud for about a year until we get some finality. And I'm pleased that there's probably not very much displacement affecting Battle Creek and Calhoun County. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Hatzma, for being here and for that report. All right, next item on our agenda is general public comment, am I correct? Are there any general public comments at this time? Kathy, yes?
Excuse me, is this the end of the meeting, general comments?
Unfortunately, yes.
I'm sorry.
Wow. Thank you, Kathy Anteas, 117 Park Ridge. I'd like to speak openly about the ARPA funds that we'll be discussing, that y'all be discussing here in the not-too-distant future. And I know there's been some ongoing discussions. I actually attended five of those ARPA meetings, so you can't say I didn't pay attention. One of the things that I did hear, I heard at least five good comments in regards to ideas that folks from the neighborhoods had at these meetings. And I'm a little, I'm concerned about the process by which we're going to go through all of those applications and the ideas. And I say that because I know and I'm fully supportive of plugging all kinds of holes that we have in the city, in the business of doing the city work. So I really am supportive of that. I feel very strongly about our staff utilizing the funds properly, and I'm excited about that, I don't have any problem. But what I'm partly concerned about is whether or not there will be a full review, examination of the public's ideas for how to use these ARPA funds. And in particular, there's a lot of folks that have some really good ideas, and they are not very sophisticated people. They aren't really good in email, they don't know much about building budgets and communicating necessarily to all y'all who are kind of high and mighty folk. But they've got some good ideas. And I want to make sure that just because their ideas weren't presented so professionally, that they may too be considered. And I'm urging the Commission and our City Manager and the staff that's involved in this, perhaps we should consider having some public folk reviewing some of these proposals. And I would rather it not be the usual suspects that we see when we invite the public to come and make comments. And I don't mean John Keneffek and I, I mean people like, sorry, John. I mean, y'all know who I mean when I'm talking about the usual suspects. When we need to talk to the public in Battle Creek, we invite, I'm not going to name any names because you don't want to hear me be biased, but I would rather it be regular people, like regular citizens, like maybe engaging the NPCs, what was NPCs three years ago, seeing if there might be some folks around that area that might be able to give some opinions about some of these proposals. I certainly do want to plug the holes, like I mentioned, in the budget, and I want to make sure that the public's ideas have full recognition, that they aren't just passed by in a two-person committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. Thank you for your comments. Are there any other public comments at this time? See none? Are there any Commission comments? Commissioner?
Thank you, sir. So, Miss Anteas, thank you for bringing that up. One of the things that I had some issues with were, I feel like there was some confusion from the ARPA workshop that we had. We discussed a rubric, and I don't think everybody was on board. And I would, I had asked if we could possibly have a Commission vote to make sure everybody was on the same page, because to me, from the proposals that I read, some of them are more urgent than others, and some of them came with information and some of them did not come with information. And I was, I had asked if that was okay, if we took a vote to see if we wanted to all do the rubric, because I feel like some of them need a rubric. I don't feel all of them do.
I'm going to turn it over to our City Manager or City Attorney to address that. I'm sorry.
Yeah, technology, I'm just going to pull it out of there. So, I can respond to that. So what staff took away from the last ARPA workshop with the Commission was a general consensus that we were to create a rubric so that the Commissioners would have something to review each one of the proposals, because they are very different. But we also knew that there had to be vetting of each one of those applications, of the organizations applying and et cetera. They're all good projects, and there's a lot of need out there. We heard develop the rubric quickly, first two weeks in January, so the Commission had something to evaluate. So we have a draft rubric, but if that is not the consensus of the Commission, then we won't advance that anymore, and we'll have to talk with you about how are you going to analyze and evaluate all the proposals.
Commissioner, do you have any other questions or comments?
So, I see Jill reaching for her.
Can you hear me? Okay. So, you know, if you have, I'm not exactly sure what it is that you're looking to do, but you certainly are welcome to put together, formulate a motion and make a motion and see if there's a second. But, you know, you'll have to have some specificity to it. But you certainly can make a motion now.
Like put in a motion so that we vote to see if the Commission would like a rubric for all of them?
Yes. So you would just verbally make a motion. I motioned that, I'm not, I'm not
I want to make sure I have the language correct.
Understanding exactly what it is that you're seeking to do, because I'm not really involved with these projects or the ARPA funds or anything like that. So
I just wanted to make sure that everyone was clear about the rubric, because I didn't feel like it was a clear, hey, this is exactly what we're going to do, and that's why I questioned it. So if we need, if the Commission, if majority of the Commission wants a rubric for all of them, then that's great. But I just want to make that clear, because it wasn't clear to me in that workshop.
Commissioner Sophia is nodding her head. Maybe she has an idea of a motion that
It was clear to me, I thought, that we wanted a rubric for everything so that we are able to kind of put them all out in front of us and go, okay, you know, these are how these compare. And it's hard to compare when you don't have some consistency between all of the proposals, at least for me. So I would prefer to see a rubric for everything.
All right. Then perhaps, you know, given this, the kind of two different perspectives on it, maybe you'd like to make a motion that there, that the staff go forward with a rubric and that a rubric be scored for each of the proposed projects. And you could make that motion. I think it would either, you know, if it passes, then, I mean, either way, it's going to answer Commissioner Herring's question. If it fails, then I guess we see where we go from there.
And I just wanted it for clarification purposes.
Are you comfortable then with me making?
I just didn't know the language. I didn't, I didn't want to say it and not have the language correct. So if you want to go ahead, that's fine.
But I think that we're talking about two different
We are. So.
Well, I mean, if Commissioner Sophia makes a motion that a rubric, that staff go forward with a rubric, and that each of the proposals be scored with a rubric, that's seconded, then there'll be a vote. And if she doesn't get a majority vote, then you could make a counter
Another motion.
Or a second motion.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Please.
Rebecca, is that rubric going to be prepared for our review prior to the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. And will that, Jill, will that rubric need to be voted on or approved in any capacity to be used by the Commission?
You know, not unless, you know, normally, the nuts and bolts of things are handled by the City Manager. So, and if the City Manager has, I think she's indicated she has a draft together of a rubric. My understanding of what Commissioner Herring is saying is just a question of, can we skip a rubric for at least some of the projects that she feels like are more urgent? And so I'm guessing that, you know, unless you want to say the Commission wants to approve what the rubric will look like, I think that's, might be a second motion.
Commissioner Morris?
Commissioner Morris?
I have a question for Rebecca. If we were to go ahead with the rubric, what does the timeline look like for addressing a project with the rubric? Because I do feel that some of the projects that we received are urgent and do need to be addressed more quickly than some of the others.
That's a good question, and a lot of it I have to push right back on you, because once you see the rubric and you say thumbs up or thumbs down, that just adds time if there's, if we have to make several amendments to the rubric. If the rubric was good, then you could probably do it in a week or two weeks' time, probably by the next meeting. But again, I'm making speculations, you haven't seen the rubric, and I, you know, I don't want to presume that you can finish it in two weeks. I think it's possible, looking at the draft rubric that we have. Thank you.
Any other Commission comments? Would anyone like to make a resolution?
Well, I'm in favor of a rubric. So I agree with my colleagues that a rubric is necessary. I would like to see, although some things are very urgent, I would really like to try to put everyone to the same, same standard against a rubric. But I also understand we have to move some things along more quickly. So Rebecca, do you think the timeline with your staff, and I want to be respectful of where you guys are in that draft, could that be to us within a week, and we can provide feedback via email, and it can be a discussion point for our next meeting? If everyone's good to go on it, then we can start going through those community submissions and supplying our feedback on those and based on the rubric and what we assign?
That's fair. You know, I'm trying to listen to both about some projects need to be advanced earlier. So it would really be up to the Commission, how, you know, how much you want to get into the rubric and its design. You know, there are minor modifications or major modifications, that would really deter, that would influence the timeframe of which it would take you to complete it.
Did you work with any outside agencies in helping create that rubric, or was it completely internally done?
We used a variety of sample rubrics from those who, we didn't reinvent the wheel.
Yes.
However, there are some things very specific to the City of Battle Creek, for example, our priority-based budgeting components of the rubric. And then we used others, rubrics from other ARPA from other ARPA communities.
Okay. Would that fit, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, it's okay.
No, I was just saying, Commissioner Herring, Commissioner Sophia, Morris, would that timeline fit, or is that not quick enough?
I think that timeline is a reasonable timeline to go ahead and get these projects started. I think that if we can go ahead and get that rubric to us before the next meeting and get that decided on, that would be really helpful in getting this done.
And I agree.
Is that possible?
Okay, this time, is there anyone who would like to put together a resolution to be proposed?
Sure.
A motion.
Oh, you got it?
Jill, were you going to say something?
Oh, I was just saying, I think we're talking about a motion versus a resolution.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. I would like to see one so that we're just not sitting here talking about something that we really don't know we're going to focus on. Vice Mayor?
I am prepared with such a motion.
Yes.
If you guys are ready. So I would like to make a motion that the commission continue on the path forth at our workshop and evaluate the proposed community projects based upon a rubric provided by the city manager's office.
I support.
We have a motion on the floor. Now, is there discussion on the motion?
Yes. There's no timeline attached to that motion. Is that necessary or not? I'm new to this, so I'm not sure.
I think the city manager said she would have it before our next meeting. Was that clear? Yes, you can add it to the motion, but we will have a rubric to no later than the next, by the next commission meeting. I believe it will be sooner, but just so you know.
I would like to review it before the commission meeting, so any reviews are able to be discussed at the commission meeting. So that's why I'm asking about the timeline.
Well, so you could motion to amend that by putting, by inserting a timeline in it. And then if you get a second on that motion to amend by inserting a timeline, then there will be a vote on your amendment to that motion. If it's not, if there's not a second on it, then Commissioner Ferris's motion would go forward for a vote.
Okay. So I will make a motion on that to amend the motion, to add a timeline, to have a draft copy to us by the end of this week, so we can provide feedback with a finalized copy by the next commission meeting.
Is your support for the amendment to the motion?
Commissioner Morris, to support?
Okay. First, we'll discuss the amendment. Are there any comments or questions about the amendment? Commissioner Sophia?
Is that a reasonable timeline for you, Rebecca? I mean, can you get it done by the end of the week?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we prepared to vote then? Okay.
I just have a comment, just because we're having a nice discussion. What happens if Rebecca doesn't have it done by next week, by this week? I mean, to me, it's a toothless motion. It's, I mean, there's no enforcement. We can't, are we going to fire her? Are we going to save her? What would we do if she doesn't have it to us? What are our powers, I guess, attorney, steel, if the city manager does not meet the timeline?
There's nothing worked into that. I guess you discuss it at an evaluation committee if she weren't to meet that timeline.
Commissioner Lance, any other? Okay. Commissioner Morris?
Commissioner Lance, I don't really think it's supposed to be like a threat or anything like that, or threatening that we are going to do something to her if it doesn't happen. I think it's more so just setting the expectation for something that's reasonable, and that's all.
Any other commission comments?
So then the vote here, first, you're going to have a vote on the amendment.
Correct.
Then you would go back, if it passes, then go back and have a vote on the initial run motion as amended if it passes.
Madam Clerk, do you mind if we do a roll call on it, or?
That'll be fine.
Let's do a roll call then.
Okay.
On the amendment.
Commissioner Blood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ferris?
Yes.
Commissioner Herring?
Yes.
Commissioner Lance?
Yes.
Mayor Benke?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Sophia?
Yes.
And Commissioner Zenda Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, the amendment has been approved. We'll now have continuous discussion on the motion. Are there any other comments or questions by the commission?
Can you read the motion again?
I'll ask the city clerk to do that.
To use a rubric to analyze and score all projects submitted by the community for the ARPA funds on the projects that have been submitted. Does that sound correct, Commissioner?
Amended with the timeline.
Amended with the timeline, yeah.
Amended with the timeline by Friday, January 7.
Any other comments or questions? See none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Ferris?
Yes.
Commissioner Herring?
Yes.
Commissioner Lance?
Yes.
Mayor Benke?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Sophia?
Yes.
Commissioner Zenda Wilson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Blood?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion has been approved. All right. Are there any other commission comments at this time? See none. I want to thank you very much for attending our first meeting in 2022, and we look forward to seeing everyone at our next meeting. Thank you very much.